Okay. All right, I want to call Monday, August 5th, 2024, the regular city council meeting to at 7:00 PM if you'd like to stand for Pledge of Allegiance. You, um, tonight, uh, we have Andrew, Councilor of the Friends and Council Bailey are excused absence, everyone else is here, um, looking for an approval of agenda, I do want to add one thing to our consent agenda, I'd like to add the reappointment of Rita Bernhardt to the Planning Commission on the consent agenda. That, I am looking for approval of the amended agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor?
I approve the consent agenda with the updates of
Regular Agenda.
Regular Agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, the regular agenda.
I have a motion to accept the, um, agenda, the amended agenda tonight, any seconds?
Second.
By Council President Miller, any discussion? Be none, all those in favor state by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, public comments. This is placed on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to council regarding any matter not on the agenda and not scheduled for public hearing, members of the public addressing council are requested to give their name and city of residence, please try not to repeat questions to allow for more speakers, speakers are to limit their testimony to five minutes as we're limited to 30 minutes total for public comments. Tonight, I do have Joel Haugen, if you'd like to come on down.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, pleasure to be here on such a nice evening. Oh, I've got some, some kind of quick comments, first of all is, um, I want to congratulate you all for your selection of, of Ben Burgener for your, uh, next city council, next city manager, had the opportunity to meet with him recently, and, um, after that meeting, I'm, I'm, I was favorably impressed, I'm, I'm very optimistic, the future, so I think he's going to be a good fit for Scappus, it's going to be a really good thing for the city and everybody's going to, yeah, it's going to be a win-win, so good work, work on that. My point for being here this evening is, uh, is the, is the Buxton remand, so I think it's been about 90 days, April 30th, I think was when Aluba ruled on that, um, and, uh, I've been advised to publicly request both the anticipated procedures and the schedule for adjudicating this matter, those two things I've been advised to request in public, so it's on the record, I don't understand what, why that's needed, but I was advised to do that, so here I am. Then regarding that, given FEMA's pre-implementation compliance measures, and I'm going to hand this out to you, and the potential for a comprehensive watershed study grant from the Columbia River Restoration Fund being sponsored by Scappus Bay Watershed Council seems sensible to pause plans for any new Buxton hearings, both actions could well have significant impacts on Buxton Farms floodplain development. By the way, just by coincidence, uh, this afternoon I got an email from our FEMA's Region 10 office, uh, and they noted that all, I mean all, a Clomar F and Lomar Fs in Oregon are suspended as of August 1st, pending full National Flood Insurance Program EIF implementation, so that's of significance, so, and I'm going to give you the, the guidance here, the FEMA published here this past month, your consideration, but anyway, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Are you going to write a schedule, kind of a where we are and what their timeline is moving forward is what you would need, Joel? Any more online or anything, Susan? Okay, we're now moving on to our consent agenda, for approval of the consent agenda tonight, we're looking at July 10, 2024, special city council meeting minutes, and July 15, 2024 city council meeting minutes, and a report, uh, reappointment of Rita Bernhardt to the Planning Commission. Approval? Council Santiago?
I approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Council Santiago to approve the consent agenda, any seconds?
Second.
Second by Council President Miller, any discussion? Be none, all those in favor state by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. The real reason we're all here tonight. You've all seen our beautiful quilt artwork up here on the wall, and it's time to kind of go over where that came from and why it's here, so tonight, um, I have a couple special thank yous, and as I call your name, maybe if you come up and we can get a picture and everything here, but I'll read this here, we have a plaque that will go up with our quilt, but on June 5th, 2024, after over a year of work and coordination, the Scappus Senior Center Quilters and Crafters donated a commemorative quilt for the city's 100-year anniversary, posed of over 25 community members designed and sewn historical and representative quilt block, this quilt stands as a visual and artistic representation of the history and community of Scappus from 1921 through 2024. The city of Scappus would like to thank and acknowledge the following community members for their time and efforts in crafting this quilt, Beth Glossinger Log Cabin Block, Carleen Houghton, uh, Boathouses on the Channel Block, Indy Hoff Planes, Trains, Ichabod's Church and Quilt on Fence Block, Dent Murphy Wigwam Veterans Memorial and Logging in the Forest Block, Heather Bonassi Library Block, Eda Gatlin Farmers Market Farms and Scappus Name Block, Judy Stoller Totem Pole and 100 Year Logo Block, June Schober Steinfeld's Block, Kathy Burke Hartsmeyer Flag and Sailboat Block, Cam Alexander Thristor Block, Pat Turpin Frogs in the Yard Block, Naval Kana Cabbage Garden Block, Rose Mary Bizner Local Bakery Block, Susan Brashear's Coffee Cup and Coffee Shop Block, and hand quilting was completed by Jan Weber and Donette Murphy, come on down, I appreciate it very much, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, all of you, it's all had a part.
It's picture time.
Because of you.
You guys can be in the newsletter.
This goes here with the Thank you, take a chance, take a look at all the pictures, they're great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now the room will clear.
You want to stick around?
It goes. I do something like that every month to get people here. We're going to miss all the cake and Thanks, guys, you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I like your pants. I like your pants. Okay, thank you.
Wednesday, Friday lunch still?
Oh, yes.
Okay, moving on to number three, we've got a Columbia County Jail levy, Sheriff Brian Pixley invited you, uh, you have a levy coming up on the November ballot, and we'd like to hear from you and let us know a little bit about it.
Well, first I have to thank you for getting me on the agenda so quickly, um, I'm going to be having surgery next week, so it's kind of trying to squeeze everything into this week as I can, um, I have some prepared comments, but more so, I just wanted to have a conversation with you guys, answer your questions, um, so thank you for inviting me to speak with you guys today, um, as you said, we're looking to have a jail levy on the ballot again in November, um, in 2014, just kind of a little history, in 2014, McKenney voters voted to pass a three-year jail operations levy, uh, that was to keep the jail open, at that point we were actually planning on closing the jail, the levy helped us keep it open, uh, and that was for 58 cents per $1,000 of assessed value, 2017, and again in 2020, voters approved renewal of that levy for the same amount, as you guys know, prices are going up, um, our medical costs have gone up 126, 128% over the past few years, and so this year we're asking voters to, once again, approve a renewal of the levy in annual amount, 75,000, or 75 cents per $1,000. In case you didn't know, the jail has three primary sources of income, you get a million dollars from the general fund every year, we have some revenue coming in from bed rentals, we rent beds to the US Marshal Service, then the other other sorts of income is our, of course, our current property tax levy. Uh, we recently renegotiated our US Marshal's contract, I think it went into effect in April, April 1st or May 1st, I cannot remember which one of this year, and that raised our bed rental rate from $92, $92 per night per inmate to $127 per night per inmate, so that was a very, very good shot in the arm for us. I'm just trying to skip through this stuff, um, prior to the jail levy in 2014, like I said earlier, we were planning on actually closing the jail, that year alone, we were forced to release 748 inmates back into the, into the public, just because we didn't have the space, the money to keep them, once the, since the jail levy passed, we have not released any inmates due to bed space, due to money, any, any sort of constraints, and the number of inmates booked into our facility grows every year, last year we booked in 3,057 inmates, on average, just over eight inmates every day of the year. Dark reality that we're facing right now is without the jail levy, there just isn't enough to keep the jail open, so if the levy fails, um, we're going to have to look into different, different ways we can hold people accountable, I think it's going to be very, very difficult to do that, essentially going to neuter public safety in Columbia County, that's frankly scares the hell out of me, um, I was, I was around back 2014, and that was, was a bad year for us, for Columbia County, we had people actually coming into the state from out of state to commit crimes because I didn't think would be able to hold them accountable, then the levy got passed and now they're in prison, lucky for us, um, it's kind of what I, the information I wanted to convey, I sent you guys some information, we can have a conversation, I can answer some questions, and what I'm hoping for tonight is, uh, you guys to vote to publicly support this jail levy, this is just as important to the city of Scappus as it is to the city residents of St. Helens, as it is to my deputies across the county. Answer any questions for you guys?
One I have kind of quickly, is your 58 cents, now has that ended?
That will end, uh, at the, in June, June 30th, 30th, June 30th of next year.
And this is to replace that?
Yes, sir.
An additional 20 cents, so 78 cents?
Additional, yeah. It's, it will, it'll be a little, little less than that, I think 17 cents, we're going to 75 cents per thousand.
Does that change over time with more and more houses, I mean, is it set amount or is it always just 75, 78 cents?
It's a set amount, um, the only thing that changes that is compression, right? So as more levies are passed, that can get compressed down further, um, that just compounds to the money that we're already lagging behind, really what caused a lot of this, I think, is COVID, during COVID, once COVID hit, we really, we weren't accepting new US Marshal inmates, um, so when they, as they would take inmates out, typically they replace them with, for three, this time during COVID, we couldn't, we want to chance them introducing any sort of illnesses into our jail, our population, so we did not let them replace the inmates that they were taking out, um, so because of that lack of bed rental, we had to use kind of our, our savings account to fill in the holes, since then, as you guys are aware, every, prices for everything have skyrocketed, and our, it's 20, I think since 2020, our medical contract loan went from 600, some thousand, 1.5 million this year, food contract, I believe, went from, quote me on this, but $400,000 to almost $700,000, everything's going up, our, all of our deputies, all of our employees are represented by union, so their wages go up every year as well, we're just kind of trying to play catch-up, and this is the way that we can help keep the jail open, keep public safety alive in Columbia County.
That really putting you on the spot, uh, Ms. Flowell, Chief, um, you have, I mean, how does it work in Scappus with the Columbia County Jail, how does, when you guys have people here, we use the jail quite a bit, correct?
Correct, thank you, Mayor, um, so generally speaking, if we have any type of criminal behavior here, we will transport a subject to Columbia County Jail, um, I don't know what the options will be through the sheriff, but if it possibly doesn't pass with no fear mongering, um, that could possibly mean us transport to different counties if we get a deal, such as Monoma County or Washington County, close places to transport. Um, in Oregon, there are particular laws that require mandatory arrests, such for like domestic violence, so those are things we can't use off to stretching with and just cite people, I could tell from my personal experience, working in the state of Washington and Tacoma, we had a situation where they were short-staffed and there are certain people who know about these certain things, and then criminal activity can There's instances where we had a person who was arrested for stolen car, had a warrant for a stolen car, and it still went taken. One thing I can say here, working with Columbia County, which is great, is that if somebody were even, if he wanted to, somebody were still a candy bar from, um, Fred Meyer's movie, still holding them accountable, it's officer discretion. Those, those are a couple things that will affect us, so officers may transport it, go somewhere else, that may take hours or outside of city.
That's one thing I'm really trying to avoid is, you mentioned the fear mongering, I, I don't know why I didn't, I haven't really pushed a whole lot, but this is kind of, uh, I put a look at this as a kind of a reality check for, for all of us.
Sheriff, how long would this levy be in effect?
Four years.
And, um, well, after that four years, do you believe that you would be more solvent, or would this be potentially another sort of recurring?
I think this is going to be recurring, this has been recurring for, for 10 years, ultimately, I would like to, uh, roll it into a permanent taxing district, but I just happen to have the bandwidth that's gone on in the world the past three years to focus on that.
How the levy works, I mean, you're looking for basically about a $3.5 million a year amount, and they divide that by amount of houses to get, um, kind of how much per thousand?
Yeah.
So with more housing, I mean, you're still getting that amount, you said, whatever, yeah, so the only thing that affects that is compression, and this, the extra money will, if my math was correct, about $5.67 extra every month.
Um, could I ask for clarification, what was the, um, first expense that you talked about, the increase, it was something to 1.5 million?
Medical.
Medical, so what did it start at?
It was 600 and some thousand change.
Okay, so, um, that's really helpful context, and I just want to point out, you know, for people who say, uh, maybe we should be looking at, you know, budget cuts and other ways to fill gaps, and that, you've experienced from a healthcare perspective, over 100% increase in costs for food, about 75% increase in cost, but what you're asking for in the levy is about a 35 or 40% increase over what the current one, so that tells me that you've done a very good job leveraging other contracts, trying to get revenue from beds, um, and this truly is the, the last resort, so what you're coming to the community with is not reflective of the cost of good increases and the inflation and the cost of living increases that you have had to incur to keep things operational.
No, my, my parents live here in Scappus, I moved them out here about three years ago, I'm in there on a fixed income, and my dad made me sit down with him, he's like, why should I vote for your levy, Brian? Well, gee, thanks, pops, appreciate that, we had about an hour-long conversation at the end, he's like, well, I guess I vote for it, so I'm very cognizant about, why I share that story, I'm very cognizant about those in our community that are on fixed income, that are lower income, um, without a jail, it's just going to compound, essentially harm them more, that's why I'm, I'm doing this, yes.
You haven't raised it into 10 years since 15.
Yeah, it's been the same amount since it was first, first passed in 2014.
And Sheriff, can you talk about the limitation of medical providers and what you've done to be creative there to try to, uh, not sustain the huge increase in medical expenses?
Yeah, so that's kind of a, a couple folds, since we're a smaller rural jail, um, you know, we go through an RFP process, but the big medical vendors that can, that can afford to, to bend and not make as much money, they don't want to come out to us, they want to go to Multnomah County or Washington County where they can make a lot more money, so last time we put out an RFP, we had one person, or one company actually answer the RFP, um, since then, I've actually met with, uh, the Claspey County Sheriff, who have a different model for medical, their medical, they have, all their medical employees are county employees, um, and that's, that's some savings to them, you know, they have half the population that we do, they, he said they typically spend about 800, 800,000 to a million dollars per year on, on medical, um, so that's one thing that we're looking into doing right now, to help try to lower our cost in the, in the short term.
And is the same true with the food services contract?
Yes, sir.
So you had asked about a possible resolution to support, um, are we interested in looking at one? Being that it's already, it's not on the ballot at this time, correct?
It'll be on the ballot, on the ballot in November.
So we can have, potentially have staff help with that if it's not on the ballot yet?
Uh, well, if it is, so if it's counsel's pleasure to support it, we can certainly, write a resolution, we can write a resolution to just avoid staff having potential conflict there. We already have a resolutions that we can mirror it after, so I think legal counsel had assisted with in the past.
And as with everything else, if any questions come up, please feel free to give me a call or shoot me an email, I'll be the sheriff's office, I'm more than willing to give you guys a tour of the jail.
And I have done that, that was very eye-opening.
And just surprised that, I'm sorry, I'm just surprised that you didn't get any funding COVID, any state funding, anything like that.
Oh, so the county did get some ARPA funds, um, but they allocated elsewhere in the county, for the sheriff's office, it's neither here nor there.
Okay, well then, um, I'll, um, I feel that we have at least, uh, looking at a potential resolution, um, are we interested in? We don't have to vote, and we'll vote on a resolution if we decide to look at one, but if we're willing to entertain the, the, a resolution, one together and
Mayor, I appreciate it, appreciate your guys' time, and thank you again for giving me a
Thank you. So are you looking for a consensus then?
Yes, if I had
A draft, a draft resolution?
Yeah. I had four people that were okay with drafting a resolution.
Issue with that?
I would be supportive of that, I mean, given the community's support for maintaining our police department, and it seems that a jail is directly, uh, related to how successful you can be in your community policing, I think it's natural that we would entertain considering a resolution on this.
Also do a little more digging, due diligence and look into this more, to that point as well, learn more about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, on to local news, we have, uh, number four, contract contract for Keys Road Reservoir Project, contract administrator Charlotte Baker.
Hello, uh, good evening, I have actually two, um, contract authorizations and a task order authorization for you tonight, um, so the first one is the Keys Road Reservoir Project, um, some of what I included in the staff report is repeats of something, or things you've already heard because you've, um, done contract approvals for other portions of the project, but, um, just as a reminder, um, the city is developing, or building a new, uh, 3 million gallon reservoir at the Keys Road Water Treatment Site, um, the engineering phase of the project was completed this spring and May, and on June 5th, we opened up the bidding process for the construction phase of the project, um, we ended up getting three bids, opened on July 11th, uh, from Emery &amp; Sons Construction, Moore Excavation, and Ward Henshaw Construction, um, we published our engineer's estimate for this project at 9.2 million, so we were pretty pleased to see that, um, more excavation came in well under that at 8,845,000, um, we were the lowest bid, and the bid package was reviewed by RH2, which is the engineering firm that did the design, and city staff, um, their proposal was acceptable, um, good, felt good moving forward with them, RH2 recommended that we do move forward with them as well, um, we just need your approval for that contract, um, and again, those funds come in part from ARPA funds, uh, distributed through Business Oregon, and that SRF loan, um, that I've brought to you before, I think a couple times, that's to the DEQ. So I recommend that council authorize Acting City Manager Dave Sukka to enter city into a contract with Moore Excavation Inc. to complete the Keys Road Reservoir Project.
Some of this funding was urban renewal dollars we signed in.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Um, and when would this begin?
Contractors poised to start immediately, they've already made some preparations, working on submittals and such, they hope to begin excavation during this summer still, so that we can beat the wet weather, some of that earthwork done right away.
Final completion would be by
A year.
Um, how many gallons are the two up on top of Bella Vista?
1.267 million.
Twice as big.
267 is offline, that's the one that was built in 1946, we haven't used that, so technically we're taking 1 million off the line till the new one's back. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, Dave, uh, is this a, where's Moore located at? Portland. Okay. East Portland. And just for reference there, I'm, I'm 99% sure they're the contractor building the waterfront in St. Helens and things, they're, are this area. Are any of these other two local, as in Scappus, Columbia County? Is everybody out there? They're all bigger companies than, than county contractor support, um, they're both very reputable, or all of them are very reputable, Ward Henshaw, I'm not familiar with, but they were anticipated by the design engineers as a bidder, they do this a lot, so there were no surprises in the bidders, as I understand it from the engineer. Did the engineer review the bids or the proposals? Okay, and they, of course, I mean, obviously you're making the recommendations, there wasn't any concerns about more, okay. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Miller.
I move that council authorize Acting City Manager Dave Sukka to enter into contract with Moore Excavation Incorporated to complete the Keys Road Reservoir Project.
A motion by Council President Miller to authorize Acting City Manager Dave Sukka to enter the city into a contract with Moore Excavation Incorporated to complete the Keys Road Reservoir Project, any second, second by Counselor Jacobs, any more discussion? Be none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Charlotte, a contract for Basalt Well Infrastructure and Conveyance and Design, administrator Charlotte Baker with the staff.
So, um, still on the water treatment side of things, um, the Miller Road Water Treatment Plant has several wells, um, and in December 2023, the city entered into a contract with Carpenter Drilling to drill and case an additional well at the Miller Road Water Treatment Plant, um, this is known as the Miller Road Basalt Well, um, that's still ongoing, but once that is completed, an engineering firm is needed to assist in the design and construction of the well equipping and connection to the existing facilities on site, um, the value of the engineering services fell below the $250,000 threshold that's required, um, that would trigger us to, um, issue an RFP or an ITB, um, so per Oregon procurement law, uh, bids can be solicited by phone, fax, or email, Dave Sukka attempted to source quotes from three engineering firms, um, that three is also the law, you have to at least attempt to source three quotes, um, and chose firms the city has worked with successfully in the past, Pace Engineers, Conso Engineers, and RH2, Pace, RH2, and Conso all initially agreed to provide a quote, Pace ended up, um, backing out, they just didn't have the capacity, but Conso and RH2 did provide us with quotes, Conso quoted us at $163,317, and RH2's quote was 97,800. Consort quoted us at one hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars, and RH2's quote was ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred. Dave and I both compared the scopes of work submitted by RH2 and Consort. They were virtually identical. So of course, we went with RH2 being the far cheaper option of the two. And again, this project is funded by ARPA money distributed by Business Oregon.
Is this below or at a budget that you originally thought of, close to a hundred thousand level?
Yeah, the Consort actually did the design work for Dutch Canyon two and three wells, and they were right in this upper ninety range. So we were a little bit taken back actually by the Consort bid being at the one sixty mark. We were expecting it to be right at the hundred thousand dollar range, so RH2 landed right in that. So it was obviously higher.
Being it's funded by the ARPA dollars, that's, we have that much set aside for this project or ARPA dollars?
Yes, we actually hope to have an excess amount of money in ARPA that once we know the final. So there'll be one more phase to this. We'll actually have to hire a contractor to do the work that these folks are designing. The conclusion of that, then we'll be able to total all of that against the ARPA that's been identified and roll those extra funds into one of our other ARPA projects. Oh, yes, this project will be fully funded. There will be no.
They're all completed within the timeline that ARPA requires?
I did that they are, but we don't anticipate there being an issue. This project has until twenty twenty-six for completion. Anticipate this being done by summer of twenty-five.
They didn't want the job.
No, they really did. I just, I shared with them the results. They reached out and said, how'd we do? Mister Mark on this one?
Yeah.
We have a motion.
Yep. Mr. Mayor, I move that council authorize Acting City Manager Dave Sukow to enter the city into a contract with RH2 Engineering for Basalt Well Infrastructure and Conveyance Design.
Motion by Counselor Holmes to authorize Acting City Manager Dave Sukow to enter the city into a contract with RH2 Engineering for Basalt Well Infrastructure and Conveyance Design. Any second? Counselor Jacobs, any more discussion?
Dave, I just want to say that I'm happy to see that both of the lowest bids met the requirements. And it's not always the case with RFPs. Sometimes you get the lower bids, but they're not as qualified. So in this case, I'm very happy to see that the lowest bids prevailed.
Yeah, and the city has a pool of very good reputable engineers. Pace actually would have been a good one, too. They did the design, a lot of the design work at Keys for the filters. They did our filter replacement design for the media and things about a year ago. So we've got a good rapport going. They provided solid work. RH2 was who designed the reservoir and stuff, so they're doing a great job there. So, yeah, very pleased with.
More discussion? If none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. One more. We have Consort Contract Amendment, Wastewater Treatment Plant Phase One Engineering. Contract Administrator Charlotte Baker with the staff report.
As I'm sure you all recall, in May of this year, you approved a contract with McLaurin Sons for the construction of the city's wastewater treatment plant phase one project. That was that big sixteen million dollar contract. The engineering for that project was completed by Consort Engineers. And they were also responsible for helping put the project out to bid and evaluating bids received by the city. Due to the technical and complex nature of the project, there's a lot of moving pieces in it. There's sort of two parts to the project. It's necessary for Consort to remain part of the project for the duration of the construction phase. Consort will provide project management services, construction administration, engineering services, and project closeout support for the city and construction contractors. The staff worked with Consort to value engineer their initial proposal and scope in order to save on costs while maximizing the services provided. Their initial scope was quite a bit higher. I can't remember what exactly the figure was, but Dave sat down with Consort and sort of stripped out unnecessary parts to try to get, bring them down a little bit. Their fee is eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars. And that recommends that council authorize Acting City Manager Dave Sukow to enter the city into a task order with Consort Engineers to complete the wastewater treatment plant phase one engineering consultation and project management services.
Thank you. And now how is this one being, how does that fit in the budget?
It's going to go against the loan. It'll be dead. It's part of the construction factor that we have to have. We have to have the oversight. The design engineer designs it, somebody needs to make sure that the contractor's doing the right thing. You don't have that capacity within our staff, anybody qualified for those levels of inspections. So this is, this is just one of those, it's part of doing business, if you will.
You can foresee it.
We, no, we foresaw it. We knew, we knew that this was coming. It was just a matter of the timing when it was relevant. We've actually been asking Consort for this scope for a month now. Because we already have a contractor down there working as we speak, so get this rolling and get the oversight going.
Miller? Dave, can you remind me what the total cost of this project is?
Oh, you're sixteen, we're going to be probably right about nineteen million when it's said and done.
Sorry, nineteen what?
That's including the biodryer. So between, between the, yeah, between the biodryer and the phase one contractor for the construction of that and all of the work that we paid in design, somewhere around nineteen million.
Does that include the engineering or?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean.
Phase one?
Yes, phase, phase one will be fully operational.
Three million gallon tank.
This is wastewater. This is down at the wastewater plant.
Or rebuild of the wastewater.
The wastewater.
Yes.
So the engineering costs, I just want to point this out, is less than five percent of the total project, which, what do we normally? What are, engineering costs are usually what percent of a total project? It's usually.
It can vary.
Yeah, it's usually ten.
Ten.
And plus percent.
Ten of fifteen.
This is less than, yeah, this is less than five, or about five percent of the total, so, okay.
Yeah, but this is the oversight of construction. We've already paid about one point, one point three million in engineering. This is just construction oversight for the next two years.
Okay.
Get us through construction.
Okay.
Management and oversight. Now, this is two years worth of work. This isn't going to happen quickly. And this is their subcontractors, their special inspections and different things, electrical oversight, more to it than just them.
They're going to be there quite often, though.
Times a week. All the documentation.
I just, I just want to say, just because, because it's, but due to technical complex nature of this project, it kind of sounds like because it's so complicated, like almost you didn't anticipate it. That's why I was asking, though, but you were.
We anticipated needing this. Like I said, we've been asking for this, would have got this approval sooner had they provided it a little bit sooner. Like unfortunately, we're in the eleventh hour now that we're starting construction and just now getting this approval, but it was out of our hands.
Is there any additional other types of, these kinds of? That you're, we don't know yet or you're waiting on?
No. No, 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 this, this is fully anticipated. Not quite following you a hundred percent, I don't think, but.
Well, just like you said, you knew about this, but I.
You were just waiting for Consort to provide the scope and fee to us for this portion of the work.
And they're going to start, they're starting. Would the other wastewater have to come down for a time period to bring this up, or does it just flip a switch and it's all?
Never stop. The system cannot stop.
Yeah.
They have, they have to, that's, that's the biggest part of this, is the coordination of how you build something while other things are online and how you transfer those flows around. There's nowhere else to ship it. It just keeps coming.
You said ship it? Ship it.
After this two years, what happens? Are they, are they training staff on, or is it just two years they're overseeing this project and it's done and we don't need them?
Okay, so this is for the duration of the construction, which we anticipate to take about two years. So these folks will be working hand in hand with the contractor as well as our staff for the coordination of operations and things as things transform around. In the, when the construction project is complete, there will be O and M manuals and all of the training will be done between the contractor, the engineer, and our staff so that when they all sign off on it, the engineer from this contract signs off and says, yes, this was built for our plans, per our design. And they give the green light to the contractor. You are done. You fulfilled your obligations.
It's part, that's, the whole process is included in here.
Yes, yes. It should get us to the finish line.
Okay.
Hey, seen that? Any more, any motions, suggested motions? And that's turn to read it?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
President Miller?
I, I move that council authorize Acting City Manager Dave Sukow to enter the city into a task order with Consort Engineers to complete the wastewater treatment plant phase one engineering consultation and project management services.
I have a motion by Council President Miller to authorize Acting City Manager Dave Sukow to enter the city into a task order with Consort Engineers to complete the wastewater treatment plant phase one engineering consultation and project management services. Any seconds? Jacob, seconds. Any more discussion? If none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. You. Works. On to the calendar. Here on August 5th, this Thursday, a planning commission at seven PM. Movies in, movies by mid moonlight in the park every Friday in August, starting at seven, movies about dusk. Again, Farmer's Market Saturdays, nine AM to two PM, fall of August. Right now, tentatively, August fifteenth, we have an EDC meeting at noon. And a Parks and Rec meeting at six PM. See, might have been canceled. And then we do have a council work session six PM, August nineteenth, followed by a council meeting at seven PM on August nineteenth. Another planning commission meeting in August twenty-second. Any updates from Acting City Manager Dave Sukow?
Not knowing exactly what you'd like to know. Yeah, Movies in the Park went off without a hitch this past Friday. Public Works crews worked diligently that day to get the park looking as nice as it can, and I think it looks really good. Our Public Works crews are also doing street maintenance work throughout the summer months along with parks. We have a county traffic safety meeting that the city participates in. We'll be doing that on Wednesday morning. Staff safety meetings will be tomorrow, and then I'll be participating in the Northwest Act meeting on Thursday. That's it for this week.
Thank you. Police Department?
Yes. Movie by Moonlight, how were the hot dogs made? Were they good?
Great.
Perfect. That's all I like to hear.
Well, grilled to perfection.
Thank you. So we got that going on, guys. We're doing it. We're doing it for the rest of the August. Tomorrow, I'll be assisting with Columbia County Sheriff's Office with the National Day Out, so if you want to dunk me in a dunk tank, I'll be there tomorrow at five o'clock. Your anger out. Hopefully, no problem stopping by. I'm also reached out to Portland Police Bureau referencing getting cost to city, no cost to the city. Riot, your turtle gear, just for things like that, if that needs me. Mike Gold, hopefully in the future, will maybe, after go through the legals, forming a team with partners or in Columbia County, just have that response. Hopefully, we'll never have to need it, but just start thinking about that process and do something now. Think it's important from my own personal experiences when I was a state department. So nothing on the radar for that, but just getting that process rolling. But besides that, uh, thank you guys very much for this opportunity. I definitely appreciate how it does not go lightly for this position. Those earned term and my best to keep this thing going and drive the surface of the city. So that's why I have been any questions.
Hit it. You all have something here in a minute? Uh, Counselor Jacobs? Counselor Holmes?
Uh, yeah, just monitoring social media over the past week, there seems to be, you know, a real uptick in some of the traffic issues and collisions and unfortunately fatalities on Highway thirty, so just imploring people to be safe. Pay attention, don't be distracted, and make sure you get home to your loved ones.
You, Counselor Santiago?
I just want to say, thank you for everyone. It was a great session. I'm glad that we're getting out of here early. Not done yet. So I just, Omic is having just a lot of events for the summers. I know that there's, for if you have kids, they have a fun Friday Bab Lab. It's a great activity. Please go into their website, Omic PCC Training Center. They have a bunch of events, also trainings for businesses. They have business literacy classes and robotics. So please use the resources and the, what we have here in the community, because if you don't use them, we lose them. So please take advantage, and just like the Movies in the Park, please take out, it's, I think, Scapus has great events for the whole family and we should just take advantage of it.
Counselor President Miller?
Thank you. The mayor and I attended the Movies in the Park on the second to kick off the Movies in the Park event for the month of August. And it was a great time. It was very hot, as everybody already knows. Susan, if you're open to it, I would like to talk to you about potentially putting together a, like a kind of a go-kit, in lack of a better term, to be able to, for council to be able to go have a more visually pleasing table at these events. We kind of found ourselves piecing together whatever we could find in this room. And our big Parks poster back there behind the whiteboard kept flying away on us. So if we, I'll work with you. I have some ideas. Of course, with Interim City Manager Sukow's blessing, I think that would be something that would be very positive, that as these events come up, we can just grab like a Rubbermaid container or something and have the different things with the proper paperweights for different seasons. And maybe even one that has a tent or something like that for the rainy season, too. But I think it's something that we need, just so that we can look more professional and have the necessary resources to be able to hand out and talk to the community about. I did attend the county commissioners meeting last Wednesday, and the only thing that I think was notable that this council will be interested in is there continues to be a discussion about the broadband efforts and reaching those people that they call the underserved with internet. There definitely is, this is my opinion of it, and my observation of it is there's a disconnect in between what I think some of the county commissioners feel is the appropriate route. And a lot of that, from what I gathered listening, and you can of course go watch the recording and form your own opinion. But my opinion of it, just watching it, was that the build out of infrastructure to be able to do broadband countywide to those underserved throughout the county, does have some grant funds tied to it, but it does require matching. And so this isn't an issue that we're not familiar with in the smaller communities with lack of funding, but the issue always becomes, where are we going to get the matching money? And we're talking about millions of dollars. And so I think some of the, the tension there, in lack of a better term, is that I don't think the county knows where they could potentially get matching funds. So then the issue becomes, we've had these discussions before here, too, is why are we spending money on studies and other things if we know the end result is something that we can't really obtain? So it was an interesting discussion. I would encourage you guys to go on the county's website and watch the recording for yourself, because the broadband topic is a topic that I think does have a lot of attention. And that mostly, I think, came from COVID and just ensuring that students and teachers had access to internet to be able to do remote learning and teaching and things of that nature. Thank you.
Thank you. Definitely want to, definitely thank the police department for flipping burgers and hot dogs at Movies by Moonlight. I have seen you guys out. I've seen a couple officers at the same time, you know, outside in town, driving through town a lot. So I, presence is good, and thank you Public Works for giving it all nice, especially the weather. It was perfect. They did good there. We do host city-county dinner, October twenty-second through the twenty-fourth, one of those days. And ask you for your support, and it's, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Where should we have it? Location and menu? So if you have some ideas, it's about thirty people. They usually pay, you know, they each pay for themselves, so what are some of your thoughts? If you guys can send them to me, we'll work on trying to get that done. But probably that October twenty-second, twenty-third or twenty-fourth will be when we get a host. Other than that, that is all I have for tonight. Want to move in. Now we are going to go, the city's Scapus will now meet executive session for the purpose of ORS one nine two point six six zero.
Oh, yes.
And we want to finish talking about. And, uh, we wanna finish talking about, uh, some point, one nine two point six six zero two dash D labor negotiation. Representatives of the news media designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. Um, don't expect any decisions to be made afterwards. Um, night. Thank you.